Want to welcome everyone this evening to our City of Bedford Common Council meeting. Stonegate Arts and Education Center, 931 15th Street, Tuesday, August the 19th at 7:00 PM. Judy, would you please lead us in prayer?
Sure. Dear Lord, be with us and guide us as we make decisions for the City of Bedford. We ask that you please keep our policemen, firemen, and all our city employees safe as they protect the city. We ask this in your precious name, amen.
Amen. Larry, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, on one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Calling our meeting to order, we have approval of minutes from July 15th from a regular session meeting.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes for July 15th, 2025.
Second. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Old business, tabled request approval of using restricted opioid funds for Lawrence County Growth Council. Who's speaking for...Joe speaking?
I'm in.
Okay.
I spoke to you all last month and passed out some information regarding what we do with the opioid funds as it pertains to our skilled training classes out at the Career Center especially. We do have, when you look at the things that are in the requirement part for the restricted funds, we nail about sixteen of those with the work that we do out there. And so we're just asking once again for the 25,000 opioid funds that we had asked for last month.
Joe, this was tabled last month due to a new director.
I'm sorry, Ryan.
This was tabled last month due to waiting on a new director?
Yes.
I'm assuming you have a new director now?
That's the rumor. We do, and we're...I'm here with his permission to have this conversation, as well as the board's conversation, to kind of fulfill what your wishes were from last month's tabling.
Just to address the elephant in the room, I'm the new director he speaks of. I will be abstaining, obviously, from a vote on this, but Joe and I have talked extensively about the program. You know, it's been successful on a lot of fronts. There are some additional things that I would like to see done with it, reaching out to get folks in it that are not just the Justice Involved System, but the others as well. But, you know, when we tabled last month, it was two reasons. One, waiting on a new director, but if you remember, the other reason, and the one that I was more behind, was at that point in time, the city hadn't got any word on when they'd be receiving additional opioid funds. We were sitting on a balance of 44,000, and Joe was requesting 25,000 of that. Since that time, the Attorney General's office has indicated that the additional funding is coming, and so that takes away some of the concerns that I had before.
I'm not sure who to address this to. Do you know when this...do you know when will this class, or when will the funding be needed?
We just began last Monday, the first use of the first 25,000 that you gave to us in the spring. Obviously, we had to take a break because of the Career Center being under construction, and we kind of take a break in the summer. So actually, we were just started last week, this class that's sponsored by the City of Bedford, with that original 25,000. And it's a full class, and it's a mixture of community and Justice Involved folks, it's just not one part of the community. And we're going to do another graduation next Thursday for the 12 participants that we have in this class.
Okay. So you're wanting this money for the next class, is what I understood?
Subsequent classes.
I'm sorry?
Subsequent classes, yes. Because we spend about a little under $10,000 per class between the teacher salaries and that kind of thing at the Career Center, and so...and we continue to reduce that everywhere we can to save dollars. And so the first tranche of money will get us to this class and next class. Sometimes it depends on how many we have in the class. If we sneak a few more in, it costs more to do that. But...and then the next 25, then, that we're talking about tonight, then, will be used for subsequent classes so that we can continue our momentum.
Okay. When will...when do we need that 25,000 to start whatever class that's going to fund?
November is our timeframe that we're looking at now.
Okay.
And Joe, if I remember right, correct me if the numbers are wrong, but we said about a little over $700 per student, correct?
About $748.
And so right now, of the 12 students that you have in the class, how many are Justice Involved?
Out of this class, 10 are Justice Involved, two are not. We had a backup, a little bit, of Justice Involved folks needing to be at a class since we had such a break between April's class and starting last week. So we gave them priority because a lot of those people need to have it from a probation standpoint, and so we didn't...but we didn't have to turn anybody away, but we do have a waiting list for our next class, which will happen after our WAGLAR classes happen in September. So we kind of alternate months, for the most part. We do illegis, it's planned five times a year, and this will keep us good, this additional funding will keep us good through the beginning of next year, for sure, and...
And since 10 of the students, 10 of the 12 students are Justice Involved, if it weren't for that fact, obviously, we wouldn't be looking at the usage of opioid funds for that. The opioid funds are restricted funds, and this is something that would be beneficial directly to those people who are...some of them are there as a result of addiction. And so it's really kind of what the opioid funds that are coming from the state are for.
So if you don't get the money, so there will be no classes?
We have other avenues of grants that we can continue to pursue. We're pursuing grants all the time, there's no question about that. And so this will put a dent, for sure, if we did not receive these funds, and to be able to continue the momentum of these classes. And the good thing is, they feed right into the adult education classes by WAGLAR that are free, next level job classes, and construction and welding, and again, no cost to the participant, and then they get a year's apprenticeship upgrade with IKORCC, I think they just changed their name, but they get into the apprenticeship programs where they can be in the trades. It's part of the flow of how we do this whole adult education thing.
The 12 to 16, Joe, or whatever is in the class, approximately how many of them are Bedford residents, or are they from Manta County? Are they, you know, is there...
Ninety-five percent are Lawrence County. We've allowed a Shoals person in before, an Orleans person, or someone, they're close. So it's pretty much Lawrence County, but there has been another person or so sneak in, but they have ties to Lawrence County. So we've been...we weigh that when we do it. We say yes consciously if we're going to do that.
Right. Okay. Well, the reason that I'm asking these questions, Joe, was from the standpoint, I was at a meeting the other evening with one of our non-for-profits, and the city donates a gift to them every year of so many thousands of dollars. We have gave them restricted opioid money in the past, and they imply that they believe that instead of the city funding them out of our general fund, that they believe that they could probably take these restricted opioid funds in place of our money from our general fund, which would save the city several thousands of dollars reference to the shortfalls that we're looking at. So that's why I was wondering as to what the date was that you actually needed the money, as to the possibility of looking to see if we could satisfy you, but also if we would have enough opioid money to be able to take and fund this other source and maybe save $35,000 into keeping the general fund. So that's...I feel like the council needs to be aware of the information that I had from that standpoint. However you want to proceed, of course, is your decision from that standpoint. Right now, we have...in the opioid restricted fund, we're now at 60,000 to 1161. And the contribution that I'm talking about, I believe, is 35,000 to the other entity.
Mayor, what do we give the Growth Council every year anyway? Is it 50,000 that we...
We give them 50,000, and then there was an agreement whenever they gave them 50,000 that there was $18,000 that the Growth Council gave to Stonegate.
Right. Is that being done? Do we know that Stonegate is getting that? I'm just asking.
I do believe that the Growth Council gave one installment, I'm not sure if they gave the second installment, because they were running low on funds also. And Stonegate's running, as we all know, low on funds also, so it's kind of across the board.
I appreciate your transparency, as far as that goes, Mayor. The thing is, you know, these are restricted funds, so they have to be used for a very specific purpose, and so any of us that receive these funds, we have to own up to everything that it talks about in the document, that what it can be used for.
Right. And the agency I'm talking about has received restricted opioid funds in the past and said that they lived up to those guidelines.
Good.
So with that being said, I would entertain if there's a motion to approve the 25,000 to the Growth Council.
So you've got how much to go, how much longer, Joe?
Excuse me?
You have how much, how longer can you go with where, because we've already given you 25,000. So where...that gets you through what point? Sorry, I didn't write that down.
This 25...this...
No, the original 25,000 that we give you.
Will get us to this...
If you don't get the 25,000 tonight, how long does that get you?
We'll be finished midway through November with the current, with the current funds as are.
Counsel, can we table this for another month?
I mean, normally, we table it once, and then it goes off the agenda. As far as I'm concerned, you either table it or I have not an issue. We can put it on the agenda again next month and just start from that standpoint, and see by then, maybe if we receive any more opioid funds, if that's what the council wishes to do. We can put it on every month if that's what we would like to do, it's not a problem from that standpoint. It's just whatever the council, how they would like to address it. We don't, as we all know, we don't know when we get these opioid funds from that standpoint. In another 30 days, we may receive some more money. I don't know.
And we don't know how much that amount is, right?
No, we have no idea.
Mr. Mayor, are you needing a motion to table till September 16th meeting?
I will entertain a motion to table, or if there's no motion at all, then it will die lack of a motion, then we'll just...if they wish, we'll put it back on the agenda for the next meeting.
I would move to table till the September 16th meeting.
Okay. September 16th. Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Abstain.
You're abstaining, correct, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Tabled third and final passage of ordinance 13-2025, amending the zoning map, Victoria Baker of Apple Baker Studios, 512 P Street, from R3 to PR. Does the council have any discussion on this topic?
Kevin, did you have any feedback from anybody?
No, I have not.
I'd make a motion to accept third and final passage of ordinance 13-2025.
I second it.
All right. Motion by Ryan and a second by Kathy. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Tabled third and final passage of ordinance 14-2025, amending Chapter 76, speed limit, John Winds Boulevard and Beach Street Roundabout. Change for east and west, traffic travel on John Winds Boulevard, John Winds Boulevard from Lincoln Avenue to Beach Street, 40 mile to 30 mile per hour, and Beach Street reduced to 15 mile per hour from Beach Street to State Road 37 from 40 to 30. Does the council have any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I move for the approval of the stated new ordinances.
Mayor, I'm assuming nobody got any negative feedback, negative feedback on this or anything?
You had a question that you...
Yeah, but you addressed that already.
Okay, all right. I've not heard any input. Chief, have you had any?
Not registered to me.
Okay. From my understanding, there were a lot of comments on Facebook, which we normally get, but other than that, that's been all I've heard about.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will move on to new business. Request approval amended resolution 182024 establishing period for rehabilitation for new manufacturing equipment deductions for WF Myers Company for the purpose of a tax abatement. Greg, would you please discuss this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This SB 1 was presented to the Redevelopment Commission for New Manufacturing Equipment for WF Myers. That was scored as manufacturing equipment, it was presented to use manufacturing equipment, SB 1. The resolution that was presented and approved, that was presented by Chance, or the property owner, I think, and it was for real estate. So they called it at the auditor's office, asked us to, or the assessor's office, and asked us to change it to be accurate what you approved. So I've got an amended ordinance, or I'm sorry, amended resolution that has new manufacturing equipment instead of real estate. So I ask you to approve that amended resolution, and it's retroactive to the date it was approved before.
Is there any discussion? Then I would entertain a motion.
So move.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. To request approval of amended resolution 24-2024 establishing period for rehabilitation deduction, Grayson Real Estate Tax Abatement. Greg?
Hey, this amended resolution is a result of an error I made in Section 4 of the resolution. There was one spot that had 10 years, and I didn't change it to seven. You approved a seven-year abatement, and Section 4 had 10 years in that one section. Everything else was seven years, the schedule, and so this amended resolution corrects that Section 4 to read seven years instead of 10. And it's retroactive as well.
So move.
I second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Compliance statement with benefits CF1 tax abatement for Grayson Real Estate Resolution 24-2024. Bubba? Step up, please.
Yes, sir. First time I've done this, not sure what information you're looking for.
That's no problem. On a yearly basis, we just have whoever has the debate come back in, we just look at the paperwork, see if any of the council has any questions for you. A lot of times, just ask to see what your employees are going, and if everything's pretty much the same as what was on the sheet, normally very simple and doesn't take long. So counsel, after reviewing that, do you have any questions?
I think my only question, Bubba, just out of curiosity, on your number of employees, you had listed 20, and we listed 18 as actual. So are those numbers still basically accurate from that standpoint?
Yeah, we're real close to that. We just lost a few going back to school, we're holding interviews, so yeah, we'll maintain that number pretty close.
All right, okay. Anyone else have anything?
Mr. Mayor, I move for the approval of resolution 24-2024. I'll second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Thank you, Bubba.
Thank you, guys.
Ordinance 15-2025, establishing fees for processing of law enforcement video, public records request to accept monies as a result of public records request. Chief?
Thank you. So, real quick, sort of explain how we got to where we're at today. I receive a lot of public records requests for body camera video from our officers, and most generally, those requests come from people outside of the state of Indiana. They tend to go online to our local radio station, they see that we've arrested someone for resisting, whatever it is they're looking for, and then they put in a public records request. The process right now is pretty easy for them to do that, which is fine, but the form they use is very general, doesn't give a lot of information on what to expect. So they'll put in this request, give me the name, incident number, whatever the case may be. That goes to Debbie, and then Debbie gets that to me, and right now, it could take hours for me to do something like that, and a lot of times, once we're done, by law, we're able to charge up to a certain amount, and we'll tell these people, hey, we're done, it's $50, $75, $150, whatever the case may be. And then sometimes, we don't hear anything back from them. So I've done a couple hours' worth of work, and we don't see anything back from that. What I did look up for 2025, we billed approximately $1,100, and we received $260 back so far. So I'm doing a lot of work, and kind of a lot of my time for people that are just wanting to put it on their YouTube channel to get clicks to make them money. So this three-part form that you have in front of you is a new form that Denise and I have worked on. This would be a form that they would receive after they sent in the request, Debbie would send this back to them. It's fillable online, they fill out all the information, and it tells them everything to expect in order for me to look and for them to receive the video, either via secured email link or thumb drive, however they want to receive that. But all the information's upfront, they can't say that they didn't know, and I'm hoping that this will solve a lot of my issues and concerns with spending a lot of time for someone to decide that they just don't want to pay the fee.
Basically, Chief, the fees we're charging is what we're charging anyway, this just makes it, if you wanted, you better pay for it.
Yeah, we can charge up to $150 per video, and that's what we've been doing. We do not, right now, charge the $75 upfront for me to begin the process, and typically, it does, it'll take me an hour to two hours just to start the process, look to see what videos are there, and there's some time involved. So if someone was to continue with the process, that $75 would go towards the total bill. So we would deduct that from the total bill. So if it was a $300 bill, the 75 would come off of that, and they would only pay the difference.
Chief, is there a state maximum that we're allowed to charge?
The $150 by state statute per video, the upfront $75 cost, that's just a figure we came up with, because that's about what an hour would cost me in time, myself, my records lady, Debbie, anybody else that's involved, it's probably going to be about $75.
So that's like earnest money if you're going to buy a house, in other words?
Yeah, yeah. If you're going to have some skin in the game, then you might follow through with it. If you don't want to pay the $75 upfront, then I don't want to spend hours putting this stuff together for you, for them to not want it.
Chief, out of the number of requests you get, how many would you say are legitimate media?
Most of them that I get are YouTubers, and they're not from Indiana. Our locals typically only want a police report, which is very easy for me to do.
Right, right.
Minutes, redact out the stuff that we can't give out, and we don't have those issues. That's 50 cents, 10 cents, you know, it's 10 cents, your copy. It's the typical YouTubers, or your First Amendment rights, people that are from other states all over the country, that just happen to follow WBIW to see the articles, and that's what they want.
So just over the last year, between Times Mail or WBIW, how many public information requests have you received? Stab in the dark.
100.
From those two news outlets?
Well, it doesn't come from them, so what people are doing, they are following, they're going to WBIW, and they're getting the information off the police log.
Right.
And then they will copy that link and say, this is what we want from WBIW, article such and such.
Right, but Holly Davis does not contact you to put something in the news, that's what I'm concerned about.
No, no.
I want to make sure our local media's not paying the price for somebody from Los Angeles.
No, they don't ever ask for our video.
That's what I was curious about. Legitimate news sources that are local are not asking you for this information.
No, they don't. They typically will just go get the affidavit and publish off the affidavit that's available to them.
Very good, thank you.
They don't request the body camera.
So I want to go ahead and put a little bit of information here. I guess the chief has talked about as far as to all the hours that it takes to do this, which for him is huge. At City Hall, as far as Debbie taking this information, and she responds to these people, then she works on the paperwork, she works with the chief, then all that is done, and then she takes it to our meetings. The city attorney has to look at all these requests, he has to sign off on all of them, then it goes back to Debbie, and then Debbie starts sending these requests out, and this all happens, of course, at the end, the way it is now, if they pay us, which normally we do all of this, as the chief has stated, and then the file's just full of all this information, and never goes anywhere. So with the people that are using the information and stuff, I want to go ahead and at this point in time ask, because the chief is, we've discussed it, we're going to ask, if possible, to suspend the rules and go ahead and do a third and final passage on this, to get this in place, because in the next however many days, depending on what they pick up from WBIW or whoever, he may spend several hours reviewing this stuff, and then we're doing the same thing again. And as the chief stated, and he knows and Debbie knows, I don't think it's that many local people that are doing this video request, it's just these YouTubers that wanted to put it on their site.
So I used to run a police force, and we were doing this exact same thing, trying to, and it makes a big difference when you're charging that money upfront, a lot of that goes away. In light of that fact, I'd be happy to make the first motion.
Second. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I would entertain a second passage.
So move.
So move.
So we've got Larry. Judy, are you a second?
Sure.
All right. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules for third and final passage.
So move, Mr. Mayor.
I second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I would entertain a third and final passage.
I'll make a third and final passage of ordinance fifteen dash twenty-two-five.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, thank you very much because I think this is a huge accomplishment for the staff and the city of Bedford for their workers. Thank you very much.
Can I ask one clarifying question?
Yes.
So you said approximately a hundred this year. And how many, what's the percentage of those that you've actually tried to bill?
So we probably have billed the majority of them because Debbie and I have gotten into the practice most of this year to let them know, yeah, there is video and it could be anywhere from a fifty dollars to five hundred dollars. Do you want to proceed with this? Sometimes they'll say, no, or if it's going to be, I'll do up to twenty-five dollars or whatever. But in most cases, they don't respond. We've gotten to the point where if they don't respond, we're not going to do it because she's gone out of her way to ask them, hey, you know there's going to be a fee before we proceed. Do you want to do that? That's something that we have started doing. So I know that this form's probably going to work because of what we've started doing, but it's just been a lot of back and forth with Debbie and I and her emailing the person on the other end. This form will take away a lot of that and free up a lot of time, particularly for Debbie in the beginning. But there's just no question, this is what's expected if you want this.
And the money collected, does that just go into the general fund?
Billy, we should probably let you comment on that.
Yeah, currently it does. That was another request, that it go into the training fund for the police department.
Either way, I mean, with that volume, of course, you kind of expect the volume probably to lower, but it's a windfall, you know?
When we were originally looking at that, we had talked about that going into part of our training fund, and then when I started asking questions about the money, I didn't want it to be that big of an issue when we, because I do think it will cut down a lot of this. So I didn't want it to be a big issue of a couple hundred dollars. There may be a time if we start having to cut our training budget that we, I come back to you and say, hey, I'll take that five hundred dollars or whatever that we've been getting from public records requests, but...
The big thing about this is when they go online to get ready to ask for it, it's going to be there that there's going to be a seventy-five dollar charge upfront, and Debbie's not going to have to be emailing them back and forth, telling them there's this, and they want to say, well, can we lower that any or anything? They're going to see it right upfront, seventy-five bucks, and if they want to do it, and most of them's going to say, we don't want to mess with it.
It'll save a lot of time. I mean, just the redaction process alone, if we go through it, because you've got to look at every one of them.
Yeah. Yeah. I'd add, Mayor, that this has to be published because it has a fee. Anytime there's a fine or a fee, the ordinance has to be published in the newspaper. It takes effect two weeks following that publication, so we'll get that published as soon as possible.
So we can get it started. Thank you. Thank you, council. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Does the board have anything for discussion? If not, I've got some updates I'll run through here fairly quick. As you all know, we have quite a bit going on from that standpoint. We're getting ready to advertise for bids for the renovation of the kitchen down at the central fire station. It's in need of some updating, to say the least. So that's in the process of taking place, and those sealed bids will be open September the sixteenth by the Board of Works, and they're going to request RDC to pay twenty-five percent of that cost. The street department, as you know, we've looked at our facilities. We're to the point now that we're going to be looking at the street department to see about either doing something with that facility or if we're going to look at a new structure down there. We got a wall down there on one building that's not in good shape. And I have to say one other thing as far as to the street department. Our street department is doing an excellent, excellent job, along with all of our city workers, but they're doing an excellent job in one thing that we have really seen something that's improved, and that's our mechanics that we have for the city. They are doing a fantastic job as far as working on our equipment, as far as to our trash trucks and stuff. They've also assisted the fire department on some tires that they've had some issues with. So I really want to try to work and give them a little better facility to be able to accomplish what they're doing now. And there's a possibility, depending on how we want to address this, that we might be doing a little bit more work for some of our other city departments as far as their vehicles, which I think would also be cost-saving for the city itself. So we're looking at that for the street department. The Northside Fire Department, as you all know, is an older facility, nineteen thirty-two, I believe, is whenever it was built. They've had issues up there for some time with the engines that they have today, with the size of them trying to get them in the building. The one they have there now actually, I think they had to do some work on the front bumper to even get it into the building to be able to close the door. They've had some issues up there, a little bit concerned with the floor and the old structure. So there's some issues there that we're going to be looking at to see how we may look at that as far as solving some of those problems that we've got. I was up there one day, actually, and it's not a big deal, but I was there and the fire truck pulled out, and when it came out of the station, it turned left. And I was like, okay, it's going south. Well, then I turned the corner and the next thing, I know it's on Fifth Street, and it's going east. And I was like, well, what in the world are they doing? Well, when I stopped and realized, they can't pull out and turn right because they can't make that turn in that fire truck around that corner like that to stay on Fifth Street. So it was just kind of surprising when I saw that exactly how that they had to operate that apparatus to get to where they needed to go. But we're going to be looking at that facility also. The roundabout, as you all see as you go by up there, they're making progress, things are moving along. Tentatively, they're hoping that that will be open on Labor Day. That is their goal, is to have it open on Labor Day. And I will let the council know whenever it takes place because I anticipate before it's open that we're going to be doing a ribbon cutting up there on the roundabout. So they're winding that down up there. They've got a little more top soiling, some permanent signage and pavement markings and things, but they're winding it up down there and taking care of it. Spider Creek, the new pump station and screening system is up and running. All of the flow is now running through the facility as far as to the new lift station. I do believe there are still some things they're doing with the tank, but they're moving right along. So as they continue, if you see some more movement down there, they will be taking the old lift station out in the near future and disposing of it. There'll be some fencing going up, there'll be some more paving going down, just tidying up the project and finishing it up. And whenever they get just a little bit further along down there, I want to schedule the time for the council, for those that want to go, to go down and tour that, I call it a facility, because it's quite amazing as to what all is down there and how it's set up. So I will stay in touch with everybody on that, and we'll pick a date and set that up probably of an evening to go down. We'll probably set it up to meet possibly at City Hall or someplace and make arrangements with the task bus to take us down so we won't have a bunch of vehicles. And we can go down and take a nice tour of that facility. So that's all I have at this time, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, we have Judy and Larry. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We stand adjourned.